Okay, everyone, it's 5:30. I'm gonna call the board workshop to order. The time is 5:30 PM in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. This workshop is officially open with a quorum present. The following board members are present in person, I'm sorry, virtually. And I will now call each of their names in order of their districts to ensure that they are with us. We'll begin District 2 trustee Toby Jackson, are you with us?
Good evening, President Ramos.
Good evening, good to see you. District 3 trustee Quentin Phillips.
Good evening, President Ramos, I am present.
Alrighty, District 4 trustee Daphne Brookins. I think trustee Brookins has not had a chance to join us yet. District 5 trustee CJ Evans. Great, thank you. District 6 trustee Andar.
Good evening, President Ramos and Andar, representing District 6, thank you.
Alright, good to see you too. Trustee Robbins.
Good evening, President Ramos, Norman Robbins, representing District 7.
Alrighty, good to see you too. District 8 trustee Anna Levanos. Looks like trustee Levanos has not had a chance to join us yet either. Trustee, District 9 trustee Ashley Paz.
Good afternoon, President Ramos, Ashley Paz, representing District 9, present.
Okay, and I'm Jacinto Ramos Jr., representing District 1, and I'm present. On March 16, 2020, Governor Abbott temporarily suspended certain open meeting requirements imposed by the Open Meetings Act to slow the spread of COVID-19. This action permits meetings subject to the Open Meetings Act to be hosted by telephone or video conference. This workshop is being broadcasted live via Spectrum Charter Channel 192. The Fort Worth ISD live channel on YouTube and a link provided in the agenda. In accordance with the suspended rules, we certify the following. The notice of this workshop has been posted for at least 72 hours. Although members of the board are not gathered in a central physical location, we do have a quorum in attendance at this workshop by video conference or telephone call. We are meeting by use of Zoom software application, which allows two-way communication for members of the public. And as we would at any in-person meeting, members of the public who have followed the instructions on the meeting notice for registering to speak during the public comment portion will be unmuted for three minutes to speak. All other meeting procedures will adhere to board adopted procedures to the extent practicable. An audio recording of this workshop is being made and will be available to the public at a later date. We apologize in advance for any unforeseeable difficulties and ask for your patience as we navigate unprecedented conditions. If you have questions about these suspended laws, please call the Office of Attorney General at 888-672-6787, or by email at toma@oag.texas.gov. I believe I just saw a message that trustee Brookins is with us. So, welcome trustee Daphne Brookins. We'll check with staff. Mrs. Molinar, do we have any public comment?
No, we do not, President Ramos.
Okay, so we will move on to number 3 on our agenda, which is recognitions. Dr. Scribner, I believe you have a recognition for us at this time?
We do, thank you very much, President Ramos, and we are extremely excited tonight to introduce to you, Board, Dr. James Hurley, who is the 16th president of Tarleton State University. We have a partnership that we'd like you to consider. The memo of understanding is in your packet. We believe this is a tremendous partnership, provides great support and guidance for our Fort Worth ISD graduates in line with our mission of preparing all students for success in college, career, and community leadership. Dr. Hurley, I'll turn it over to you and allow him to introduce members of his team and make a presentation with regard to the partnership we would like the board to consider moving forward. With that, I'll turn it over to you, Dr. Hurley.
Thank you, Dr. Scribner, and President Ramos, thank you for allowing us to present to you and the other members of the Board of Trustees for the Fort Worth ISD. Joining me today will be Dr. Javier Garza. He is our Vice President for Enrollment Management and Financial Aid. Also on the phone, I think I see her name, Dr. Kim McQuestion. She's joining via virtual as well. She is our Vice President for Strategic Initiatives, but more importantly for Fort Worth ISD, she is our Dean of our newly minted Fort Worth campus. I just want to start by saying this, and as a parent, I want to commend Superintendent Scribner and all the members of the faculty and staff there at Fort Worth ISD for a remarkable job and a job well done during the pandemic when, I guess it was the second or third week of March, when all of us were forced into making a decision on, you know, fully online and sending students home. And as a dad of four, I can tell you, it definitely created a new dynamic of teaching from home and the Hurley household. But more importantly, what I saw, and I want to commend the Board of Trustees as well. So many of those kids in your district, the lone, or at least maybe the two nutritional meals that they receive are in your district. And you guys stepped up, provided those meals, I've seen it throughout your community. You created the mobile learning centers, the mobile go centers. What an incredible feat to pull off in a short amount of time. And so as a president of an institution that depends on your product, let me say that I couldn't be more proud of the work that I saw out of your district. And I think that all of you should be commended. The reason we're here today is to talk about what we think is a win-win partnership. I've been in Texas for about a year and a half, and my first six months, I went on a listening and learning tour. And I wanted to learn more about the people and places in Texas. And we wanted to start in our service region. And I was able to spend a day with Dr. Scribner and visit several high schools and learning academies. And I was just blown away at the great work that's taken place there. As you know, Fort Worth ISD is really, really important to us. It is the backbone of our enrollment. Each year, we get more students collectively from your district. And so it is increasingly important that we strengthen the partnership. What you have before you is something that I created within the first few months. And that was my first big presidential initiative, if you will, was to develop the Distinguished High School Partnering Program or Partners Program. And what we wanted to do was try to invest more institutional aid into the students and into the ISDs that have been strategic partners with us. I want to be transparent on the outset, we cannot offer this to every single district in the state. And we certainly can't even offer it to every single district in our region because of financial sustainability and viability. We did propose this probably, I don't know, in the first five or six months, and then COVID struck, and we all were forced to deal with other issues. So I'm grateful that we've got this back before you and us. Essentially, there are three major components. First and foremost, we will accept the top 25% of your graduates with no strings attached, they're automatically admitted regardless of test scores, etc. And the reason that we feel very confident in doing that, our data and analytics behind us enrolling a Fort Worth ISD student, we've seen that those top 25% students, we retain those students, they persist. More importantly, they matriculate through our program. So they finish a bachelor's degree, they matriculate into one of our masters. And many of your educators in your system, your principals, some of your assistant principals, guidance counselors, they're also pursuing an EDD through our institution. So we've seen tremendous success with the top 25%. So regardless of what their test scores are, we accept that student upon entrance. Secondly, we waive all admission, application fees, etc. for your students. Here's where the guidance counselors and the principals get really excited. We launched a new scholarship program called the Guaranteed Award Program, or the President's Guaranteed Award Program. And every single student receives a base scholarship based upon their high school rank. Well, in addition to that increased scholarship amount that we've allocated for those incoming freshmen, we're now going to add an additional $500 or $1,000. If they're top 10% of Fort Worth ISD graduates, they will receive an additional $1,000 as a stackable scholarship. If they're outside of that 10%, they'll receive an additional $500. And that's on top of the gap. So your students don't have to choose, do I accept the gap scholarship, which is more, or the MOU scholarship, they get both. And so it significantly reduces the cost of education for your students. In addition, we've only done this for, how many other ISDs? This is the only one, okay? So this is the only ISD that we're willing to offer this additional scholarship. Each year, we're going to provide one $10,000 scholarship to a senior that would attend Tarleton. And that's something we don't do. $10,000 is obviously more than the cost of tuition and fees. And we estimate that's roughly the cost of attendance minus the room and board, obviously. But we're willing to do that each year. So we could have a collective four or five-year period where we have four or five students that's receiving that additional $10,000. And so you're the only independent district that we've offered this to to this point. So that's really it. The rest of it is, we want to be a good partner. It's very non-binding. What we don't want is to box out other institutions. We're not asking for exclusive rights to all of your students. Because at the end of the day, Tarleton isn't the right fit for every single student graduating from Fort Worth ISD. But we are the right fit for some. And we just want to create an avenue where we're affording opportunity and access, but more important, the financial opportunity and viability of those students attending Tarleton. It's our goal by 2030 to get Tarleton back into the top five most affordable public institutions in the state. And in order to do that, we have to invest more into our high school graduates. So that's it in a nutshell. I know we're on limited time, I want to be sensitive to your time. I'll stop there, Superintendent Scribner, to entertain any questions.
Thank you.
For President Ramos.
President Ramos, yes, thank you.
Yeah, I guess the only thing we'll note is, as staff had reminded me that we'd already approved this back in March, and this was right at the beginning of COVID. So any questions from any of our colleagues? Or comments? Trustee Paz?
I don't have any questions, I just have a comment. Thank you so much to everyone at Tarleton State for this incredible opportunity. What I can't imagine having something like this when I was a senior in high school. And this is just incredible, and I thank you very, very much.
Well, we thank you. The only thing that we're going to ask Superintendent Scribner is is to really help us get the word out, now that we've kind of cemented this. We will launch a series of press releases. We do think, and I would prepare the district for this, we do think that this will, because of the size of your district and the growth of our institution, this is really innovative. We can't find an institution in the country that's investing as heavily as we are, certainly not now, at least public institutions. And we do think that it's going to be picked up on some national waivers. We've already had some inquiries, and we've asked those national outlets to kind of wait until we had an opportunity to have this dialogue today. So our folks will be reaching out to Superintendent Scribner, and we hope that we can get some quotes from some of the trustees, for sure. Superintendent Scribner, and then really help us push this out into the high schools. We're investing heavily into this, this is a multimillion-dollar investment for us. And obviously, we're banking on that more students in the Fort Worth ISD will choose to attend Tarleton.
Thank you. Trustee Brookins?
Yes, I also think this is a great opportunity for our students. I have a couple of questions. Is there a timeline on the scholarship? Do they have to use it right away? Or, you know, what if they are working and decide, I'm not going to go until the spring? Or can they still use it?
We will, that has not been uncommon, especially in the pandemic environment. And so we have been very flexible and have delayed. Whenever they choose to start college, this is generally one for entering freshmen. So if they want to delay their start, then we've been pretty flexible with that.
That's a great question, and if I may, I want to add too, this is a perpetual scholarship. So this isn't kind of a bait and switch or a game of gotcha. We don't believe in playing that game, those games here at Tarleton. This is guaranteed, as long as they maintain their satisfactory academic progress, which they would have to maintain their federal aid or state aid or any institutional aid. This scholarship is through the duration of their completion of college. So thank you for asking that question, because that reminded me to make sure that all of you knew that this is perpetual, not one time.
Okay. And also, if they have like other scholarships, you know, does that eliminate anything, or is that all added together? For instance, have you had someone come in with athletic scholarship? Would that just add to their scholarship?
Yes, it's all stackable.
Thank you.
Wanted to make sure I'm saying the right thing, my financial aid director here. Yes, the answer is yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Trustee Jackson?
Thank you, President Ramos. Dr. Hurley, I have not yet met you, but I look forward to shaking your hand, I guess, post-COVID. Thank you, and the entire team at Tarleton. Your enthusiasm coupled with the ingenuity is a win for our students. And you mentioned that we want to get press release out, and we want to make sure that the community knows. I want to make sure our board stays updated on that if we can, because this is hugely important for our kids. And they need to know about these wins, especially during this time of COVID, where things have been tough on our students and on our team. And I think this is just a real nice shot in the arm, pun intended with COVID. So thank you.
I love it. And this is not a public service announcement. I've worked in three states, and I sincerely mean what I'm about to say. I've worked in three states, and I've visited, literally, since I've been in Texas, we have visited with over 100 high schools. Now, not 100 ISDs, obviously, because, for example, we visited many high schools in the day that Superintendent Scribner so generously gave me to take me to schools. But high schools, I think, were about 102. I cannot say better things about your superintendent. He didn't ask me to say this. We talk occasionally, but it's very above the board in terms of professional. It's typically always about education. He truly cares about the students and the kids in this district. And I knew very quickly that this Fort Worth ISD, with his leadership, with all of your leadership, this is a district that we want to model ourselves around. And I really believe that this partnership will be a national model. And what we're going to do, we're going to force more ISD and public institutions to put their money where their mouth is. Yes, we're always calling Dr. Scribner and his staff to send us more kids. But in fairness, what are we doing to serve as a good partner as well, right? And that has to be two-way. One of the things that we offered him and his principals and counselors, when you have a financial aid day, let us come in and help those parents. We're not going to push Tarleton State. It's not about that. It's about helping raise the high tide. Because I was a first-generation poverty student. And without an institution, a public ISD like Fort Worth and a public institution, I wouldn't be sitting here today. And so the higher the tide, the more students are going to win. And the more access we can create for young people, the better off all of us are. And so we truly want to be a partner. It's not, it is somewhat proprietary in this partnership. But at the end of the day, we want to be there for student teaching needs, paraprofessional coaching needs through kinesiology, student athletic trainer, you know, all those types of things that we can provide more assistance. We want to be that for you.
Thank you. We have two more trustees that want to speak, trustee Robbins and then trustee Dar.
Thank you, President Ramos. Thank you, Tarleton State, for investing in our students. It is really important that they have as many options as possible to continue their education. That's one of our core values, is that they move well beyond a high school degree. So thank you for investing in them. As Tarleton becomes a bigger and bigger component of Fort Worth, this is a wonderful bit that I can just see growing over time tremendously. So we're grateful to you, and thank you for being with us this evening.
Thank you.
Trustee Dar?
Thank you, President Ramos, and thank you, Dr. Hurley and team. I'm really excited about this. This is such good news, and I appreciate the comments that you've made about the programs and the students in Fort Worth ISD, and that the quality that we're sending you is important to us, because it's our job to make sure that we're preparing these kids for college career and military readiness and community leadership. And you're helping to make that possible with this partnership. I am wondering about some dates. So this is, we do need to get the word out. We, the board, approved this partnership in March. So I'm assuming that this all begins during the 2021-2022 school year, correct? So it applies to this year's seniors, the 2021 seniors, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so when is the deadline for registration to Tarleton? So that, and I say that just so I can get an idea of it, and we can make sure that we're all on the same page, and people who are watching can also be aware.
So we will, if they apply, I mean, obviously, we'd like them to register as early as possible once the freshmen begin registering with us. But if they come to us in July or early August, we will still honor the agreement. So yeah, sooner is always better, just for their sake. But generally, there is no deadline.
Well, and your students that have already applied, they're going to get a big, kind of a post-Christmas, if you will, post-holiday surprise, because after this announcement, we didn't want to do anything until we had an opportunity to share, garner some feedback from you all. But we will go back, and all of those students will have this additional aid applied to their account immediately. So literally this week, they will see a bump in their financial aid package. But I also think it's important that, you know, we're not coming to you as an institution that's struggling. And, you know, I know a lot of you have already read the propaganda that we put out. We were one of the fastest-growing institutions, not only in Texas, but in the country, when a lot of other institutions either broke even or lost students last year. We grew by nearly 1,000 students. So we're coming, you know, really at a time of prosperity. And I'm just a big advocate of public schools. You will not find a president in the state of Texas that's a bigger advocate of what you guys are doing because of the students that you serve. I see a lot of young James Hurleys in your district. And when I visited some of the high schools, I looked into those eyes of those students, and that was me. And so you've got to continue to keep doing what you're doing. You guys are doing unbelievable work. It's a model district, and I just can't be more excited about the partnership. And again, I think this is going to be a national model that will enhance access and opportunity for all walks of life across the country.
Thank you for that. I am actually the mother of a graduating senior. And I know that right now, as we get information back from colleges, we're looking at those numbers, and we're looking at that bottom line. That's a critical piece of information. So I'm thrilled that there are going to be some families that are going to benefit from this. Is there a deadline to apply for the financial aid that you mentioned?
No. No, we don't have a, because we're an open, you know, as a public institution, we have to remain, our registration, if you will, enrollment process has to remain open until really census date, so.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, this is a great partnership. I have only heard wonderful things about Tarleton. The people that I know that teach there, that go there, are very pleased and proud to be a part of the Tarleton family, and I'm glad that we're going to be a part of that family too. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Dar. Next, we have trustee Brookins.
Are we going to have this out on a press release, like this week? Or when is this coming out?
Yes, our, yeah, Cecilia Jacobs, our Director of Communications, first thing in the morning, she's going to reach out to Superintendent Scribner. So if all of you, if you could go ahead and, at least the president making a statement on behalf of the trustees, would be wonderful to have ready. In the morning, she will want a quote from Superintendent Scribner. We'll put this out on the AP, and then they'll start picking it up really, really quickly. So most likely by the end of the day tomorrow, this will be pretty widespread news. Because of the size of your district, the growth and the size of our institution, and the amount of money that we're investing, it'll be picked up pretty quickly nationally.
And trustee Brookins, our communications team stands ready to push it out on social media as well.
Okay, thank you.
Next, we have trustee Levanos.
Thank you, President Ramos, and thank you to Tarleton State University for doing this. And thank you for believing in our students. I was one of the students who, at the time, I was like, I wasn't sure if I was going to college. I'm so glad that this opens up more opportunities for those students who might think they don't have a chance. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, looks like those are all the questions or comments from the board. Thank you, Tarleton, appreciative of you, and thank you for taking the time to join us tonight to fill us in.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you all for your service.
Thank you.
Dr. Scribner, I know we've got reports, presentations, I think we have an internal audit update. I'll turn it back over to you.
Yes, thank you, President Ramos. We, at this time, would like to update the entire board on the work that has taken place in our chief internal auditor's office. As you know, he's worked very closely with the Audit Committee members, Subcommittee of our Board. And that Subcommittee asked that we make a presentation to the board as a whole in our community. So at this time, I'd like to turn it over to our chief internal auditor, Aaron Munoz, who'll provide an update on audit activity and an overview for the 2020-21 school year. With that, I'll turn it over to Aaron.
Thank you very much, Dr. Scribner. Want to start off by saying good afternoon, trustees, and thank you so much for providing me the opportunity to come here today and be part of the workshop and start discussions with you, and let you know a little bit about internal audits work, our processes, how we develop our work plan throughout the year, how we do our audit results, our presentations to the Subcommittee. And also, it's my hope that going forward, this is a more regular occurrence, and that we start discussing those audit results, the audit follow-up information throughout the school year, every year. And with that, what I'm doing here today is kind of giving everybody on the board a background information on these items, so that when we come together later on, you have a little better understanding of where these audit results are coming from, how these audits were developed, and maybe help you in your questions, more focused on what information is, and just a better understanding overall of how everything works together. And so with that, I'd like to go ahead and start on the next slide with a little bit information on just the internal audit office as it works. First off, what is internal audit? We are a value-added activity, and so what does that really even mean? And so for me to give you a better explanation, it's probably best for me to do a walkthrough of this entire first bullet point and how that works, and how internal audit works in the full Fort Worth ISD district. And so first off, we start off with the district's goals and objectives, right? Those Lone Star Governance, those initiatives that you have set forth in the district to improve student achievement, right? And those things that we have for our students and our community, our citizens, so that our kids are happy, they're safe, you know, they're well-functioning individuals while they're with us and when they leave us, all those goals that we've established through the citizens, through you. And then we have, the superintendent has structured the operations within the district, focusing our resources on the achievement of those goals and objectives, right? And so our internal audit comes into play, is the risks to the district in that achievement of those goals and objectives. And what are risks? And what are risks? Risks are anything that moves the focus of those resources. And here's just a brief explanation, example, I guess. Let's say we have, we have multiple government regulations here that we have to follow at the district. And let's say, for instance, we have a problem with compliance with one of those, and the government comes down and imposes sanctions on us. Sanctions that could be anything from trainings throughout the whole school district to even the development of maybe additional positions to deal with the problems that we have. That moves those resources, that moves that budget away from efficiently and effectively and as quickly as we can achieving those goals and helping our kid. And so, that's where internal audit comes into play. Every year, we speak with all the individuals about risk in the district. This helps us develop our annual plan, and we'll talk a bit, a little bit, a little bit more about that as we go forward. But just so you know, that's where internal audit comes into play. That's where our work program is developed, and that's where we focus our energy on for this district. And so, just a little more information on the office, we have eight staff members here, all highly qualified. We have several certified public accountants on staff. We have several individuals that are certified in doing this work, internal audit work. We have some certified information system auditors. Those are individuals that are proficient and looking at IT functions. We have many individuals with master's degrees, all have been here for several years in this district or other districts like this. And also, a little bit of more information that last bullet there. We also perform consultive roles for the district. And another example for you, so it makes us a little easier to understand, is that this year, our chief for equity and excellence came to us and asked us if we would perform a compliance review for the adult education program. And so, when we have the time and we can provide that role, we will do a more focused review based on specifically what that individual has asked, and we were able to go ahead and do that, go forward, look at what was required by the government, what we're doing as our activity, and provide feedback to the chief so that she can change operations the way that she see to need to fit. And so, going forward with the next slide, we'll go back a little more about what is that risk assessment and that annual plan that we do here every year in the internal audit office? And this is something a little bit new. I've been here for a year. We started it last year, developing it more every year as we go along. I'll talk a little bit more about that and how I'd like to involve all of you going forward. And so, the first thing that we do when we do this risk assessment every year is we identify the risk universe, and that's just basically the organization structure. We have the superintendent who is in charge of everything, the chiefs who have specific areas, and then so on and so on that goes down so that we know we can identify those individuals that we need to talk with. If I'm going to talk to the superintendent, we're going to talk about everything this district does, and the same with the trustees. And so, that's where we start our information. We have these open discussions with these individuals. We talk about risk. It serves it serves multiple purposes. First off, you know, it opens this, it's this understanding, maybe, you know, maybe they need to shift focus this year to something that they don't have a full understanding on. Maybe they'd like internal audit to come help. They don't have the time. They don't have the resources to dedicate in a full, comprehensive review of an operation that they'd like to know better if it's functioning properly, efficiently, or in compliance with some kind of regulation. So, we start those discussions, bring that information together. And then, what we did last year, and what I'd like to expand on this year, is last year, I met individually with each of the audit committee members. We had those discussions as well. What are the citizens talking about? What are your concerns? What are these areas that you think need to be reviewed and have a better understanding of? And so, what I'd like to do this year to expand the risk assessment is have individual meetings with each of you and do that same thing. Have those, have that community feedback be part of this risk assessment so that I can develop some kind of plan to help address the citizens' needs, help those students better, help ensure that we're meeting those goals and objectives for our kids. Also, we'll bring in external risks. Examples of this are easily the COVID situation this year. How are we addressing it? How are we going to move forward? How are we making sure if it happens again? Know that that we're prepared. Also, we talk with other school districts. We have regular open communication with Houston, with Dallas, with Austin, and with San Antonio. And so, as an example, last week, I was just discussing with Houston activity fund processes. They're having questions. Their trustees are having a situation where they have the same problems over and over again. How do we tackle that here at Fort Worth? I help them. They help me with certain information. Dallas has a huge new bond. They're, all their focus is on construction this year. And so, that plays a role that comes in the risk assessment as well. And finally, as part of the risk assessment, we have anything that's happened through our own work during the year. If we've noticed something that we didn't have the immediate time to identify, we'll add that to the risk assessment so that we have a very comprehensive view of the things, you know, the best we can do to bring those risks and evaluate those risks throughout the year. And so, on the next slide, I'd like to give you just a small example of what this looks like. Again, this is just a very small example of a specific risk assessment. And so, on the left-hand column, you'll see information technology. So, what I did last year was I met with the information technology, and on the fourth column from the left, we talked about risks. Now, I've been doing this for a while, several universities, several, a few school districts I've worked with. And so, when we met last year and did this for the first time, I had a a large base of risks that I've developed throughout the year. That was a starting point for us to talk about in each specific area in IT. And here, from the beginning, just an example, we have, you know, if we have failed or insufficient employee training, if failure to retain key employees, things like that. And so, that starts our discussion when we start talking about that. And to, you know, enhance that discussion, I also give them in the next column there, the expected controls. This is the things that you would expect to see that would help control that risk, help bring the level down or the possibility of it actually occurring come to fruition. So, we start these talks, we start this discussion with everybody, and then we rank them. This is a very basic ranking on impact and probability. So, if it happens, if this risk, if this failed or insufficient employee training risk happens, how bad is it for the district? How do resources have to be moved, right? Do, does everything have to move? Does it, does the whole district have to stop and address the issue? Well, then that's high. Can it just be fixed by a simple procedure chain? That's that's low. And then, probability, this where these controls come into place. Do we have the controls in place to address the risk, to keep the level down, to to keep the ability for it to actually happen down? So, if we don't understand the process surrounding the risk, if we don't know the controls and the probability is high, if we have a good understanding, we're discussing these controls and it's slow. We bring these two things together, and then we rank every single risk, high, medium, or low. And then, from this, we bring all this information together. We gather it, collect it, and we develop the plan every year for internal audit so that you know that our plan is not just, you know, created from ideas by myself or the office. This is actually structured on feedback from everybody in the community, from everybody that does this work every day. And then, we develop the plan that looks at these high risks, mostly the high risks when we look at the plan. That's where we start. And we start getting those questions answered so that you can go back to the community. You can give them feedback. You can tell them what we're doing here, how this is just a part of a whole process if they have questions. And so, that's just an understanding of how that risk assessment feeds into the audit plan. And so, on the next slide, here is a little example of the audits that we are performing or have performed this year. IT application controls, that was a review of how IT plays a role in the procurement of our software or any IT purchase, you know. Are they, do they have a place prior to procurement? Are they making, are we making sure that when we buy some piece of IT equipment that it's in line with the systems that we already have, that we're not wasting money? Looking to Edgar compliance, so with the government grants, we have specific procurement requirements. We looked at the compliance with that adult education grant. I just talked, that was our consulting process. The activity fund full process audit. So, this one, I want to use it as an example to let you know how we do our audit. This is a thousand-foot view of what we're focused on when we do our reviews. And so, what we push, what I push the staff here to do is to move past small non-compliance issues and look more towards the core issues so that when we make a recommendation or we identify something that's, you know, needs to be addressed, that it's going to make a substantial change, hopefully district-wide for us, something that's really going to do something good for everybody. And so, when I first came on, the discussion with the audit committee was that we have the continual issues that we see every time that you go to a campus, you do an activity fund review. It's the same thing over and over again. There is this problem, this problem, this problem. Why is this happening? What can we do to address it? So, what we did to find the the core issue was we took a holistic view. We looked at everything. We talked to everybody. We talked to the financial secretaries, the principals, school leadership, the chief financial officer. We talked to the comptroller. Those individuals in finance are specifically responsible. We got an understanding of the full process. And when we brought it all together and through those discussions, really, with finance and school leadership, I mean, it came to light that there probably needs to be the development of a communication tool between school leadership and finance when they are creating those procedures. You know, we need to have an understanding of what fits into those principals' day. We're going to support those principals. We're going to support those teachers. We need to make sure that those processes we developed, that they're comfortable with them, that they know how to do them, and that since they're ultimately responsible for these, this money, that that it fits into their operations. And so, that was the base discussion point. That was the the base issue. And I think, you know, going forward, that's going to drive a real change and hopefully address the overall problems that we were discussing when we first started. And there were a few other recommendations, even from my own office, to change the way that I'm identifying campuses to review, do more analytics, look for outliers and things like that. And so, that that's, just so you know, that's the thousand-foot view of when we do our audits. That's really what we're looking for, those core issues, those changes that are going to make a big difference in the district and help us really achieve for our students and for our district. Some of the other ones here, you'll see procurement card controls. We'll be presenting that at the next meeting next month. CIP activities, we have a full-time auditor that is sponsored by the bond program that is dedicated all the time to reviewing construction and process. And so, that individual right now is looking at three separate construction projects, working closely with CIP office. And we are reporting, every time we meet with the audit committee, we're doing a report on exactly what's going on with the construction. We're also looking at contracting procedures review that are not CIP, our overtime controls, IT security and governance assessment. We're actually going out for external assistance, and we're going to have our IT auditors and this external individual work together. We're always developing our internal people to be more proficient, and so this will help that as well so that we can get a better understanding of the IT security right now, and then finally, campus security. And then, the next slide, a little understanding of what happens when the audit committee meets. And so, at the minimum, we meet four times every year. And during those meetings, we discuss, of course, our audit results. And when we discuss those audit results, what we do with the audit committee meeting that's a little different is that we have a representative, usually from that audited party, that can be there to answer any questions right away, hopefully, you know, prevent any lingering information that's required at those times. And also, if they want to provide more color or more information on the report, because the reports are very condensed, hope they'll, they're there to do that as well. We also look at, we also present follow-up activities. And what this is, is every time that we do an audit, we discuss those issues with those individuals, and they provide to us, you know, if they're in agreeance, they provide to us, you know, a corrective action plan. How are they going to address this this issue that was identified? And they give us a date. They say by this time, you know, we expect that this this corrective action will be fully implemented. And so, internal audit is tasked with following up and presenting that information every time we meet with the audit committee to them so that, you know, we keep track, people are held accountable, and that the information, that these things don't just kind of fall away. Also, like I said before, we discuss our CIP audit activities. And finally, always, we give the audit progression on that audit plan. And so, since that audit plan is such a big tool, you know, it was created from those risks and those those information from everybody, we need to make sure that I'm held accountable to the completion of that plan because this is what we agree that we would have done throughout the year, and this is the information that you're looking for. And lastly, going forward, so a little information. So, after this meeting, I'm collecting all of our audit reports, audit plan, the risk assessment for this year, and all the follow-up activities, and we'll be distributing that to each of you, either electronically or through some kind of packet. I'm trying to decide on that. It should be in the next few days. Also, like I said, in the next few weeks, be reaching out to each of you to hopefully have that one-on-one discussion about the risk assessment and your concerns and your constituents' concerns. Also, so going forward, after every time we have an audit committee, as soon as those are presented to that subcommittee, we will give that information to you so that you have it readily available. And then, the next time we meet and we discuss, then you'll have that information. You've had it for a while, and you'll know what questions to ask. And then, again, like I said in the beginning, finally, hopefully going forward, this will be a more regular occurrence. So, the way that we plan it is that, for instance, next month, we will have an audit committee meeting where all of that information is discussed with the audit committee in detail. And then, hopefully, next time there's a workshop, I can come here again. And since you have all of this information, I didn't want to just throw audit results at you and follow up in information without having a background of understanding exactly what it is. And so, next time we meet, we'll start going through all that information. Again, thank you all so very much for letting me come here and talk to the, talk to you all about this. I would love to answer any questions that you have, or if you'd like to send me an email, that would be great, too. Or during that one-on-one conversation, hopefully, that we have, and any questions that y'all have right now, please go ahead and ask.
Okay, colleagues, if you have any questions, it looks like trustee CJ Evans has a question.
I just wanted to say thank you for so thoroughly explaining the role of the internal audit, and I am glad to hear that community feedback is going to be a part of the risk assessment. Thank you.
I'm just glad it made sense. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We have trustee Paz next.
Hi, thank you so much. It's great to hear from you, Mr. Munoz, and to make your acquaintance. So, my question is about some work that we are doing, that we we've been doing in Fort Worth ISD around our racial equity goal with our racial equity committee. So, when we adopted our racial equity policy in 2007, one of the tenets of that policy is that the school, that we would be more proactive with sourcing, with our procurement, with including businesses that are historically underutilized businesses, not just for the CIP, which is doing really, really great, but also in our everyday business practices. So, is that the kind of thing that that your that your audit team can look at in their yearly plan? And if so, has your team been through our racial equity training to get a good understanding of what what specifically is is supposed to be done, basically?
So, yeah, that is definitely something that we can look at and answer any questions that come up. And just so you know, the way that we start every audit, no matter if we've been through the training or not, is we have a very comprehensive planning stage that we do, and that is gaining a full understanding of the operation which we're looking at. So, that's, you know, talking to those individuals responsible, going through any of the information that, you know, is is required by the district, looking at any documented policies or procedures, looking at external requirements. So, we will collect all that information prior to even developing the the plan for the specific audit, that how we're going to look at everything. So, no matter what, that is, that is actually the first and most important stage for us.
Okay. Trustee Robbins.
Thank you, President Ramos. I just want to thank you, Aaron, for the great work you're doing for our students, your focus on student achievement. I think most people don't think of the audit function as as relating directly to student achievement, but it surely does. And you keep us focused on that, and we're very grateful for that. So, keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Looks like those are all the questions or comments from the board. Doctor, for Dr. Scribner and or Mr. Munoz, if there are no additional comments, we will begin to get ready for executive session. Um, if there are no additional comments, we will begin to get ready for executive session. Let me get my watch. So the time is 6:20 PM. The date is Tuesday, January 12th, 2021. Uh, we will now recess and reconvene virtually for executive session as authorized by Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code under sections 551.071, 072, 074, and 076. Okay, I'm going to get it started. In accordance with the Open Meetings Law, the board opened the workshop at 5:30 PM in a private video conference with a quorum present, recessed and reconvened open session virtually, adjourned regular session, convened executive session. Adjourned executive session is now reconvened an open session at 8:23 PM in the public virtual video conference with a quorum present. The trustees who are present virtually are, uh, just to confirm, District Two trustee Toby Jackson.
Present.
District Three trustee Quentin Phillips.
Present.
District Four trustee Daphne Brookins.
Present.
District Five trustee CJ Evans.
Present.
District Six trustee Andar.
Present.
District Seven trustee Norm Robbins.
Present.
District Eight trustee Anna Luevanos.
Present.
Uh, District Nine trustee Ashley Paz able to join us. She was having connectivity problems, and I am District One trustee Jacinto Ramos Jr., and I am present. Uh, we are at the end of our meeting, so we will now adjourn, and the time is 8:24 PM. The meeting is officially adjourned. Everyone be safe.